Madam Clerk, will you please take roll?
Yes.
Mr. Combs. Mr. Henchy.
Present.
Mr. Luther.
Present.
Ms. Nelson. Ms. Reclu.
Present.
Ms. Reclu, are you present?
Yes, present. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Stone.
Present.
Mr. Washington. Mr. Washington. Eight or seven council members present, one absent. No, ma'am. They won't be able to hear on the live stream.
Lot of feedback. Is that better? Did you get it? That's better.
Thank Pastor Williamson, are you here to do our invocation this evening? Everybody could please stand up.
Mother in heaven, we're grateful for the blessings of this day and for the promise of rain in the heartland, perhaps tomorrow night and Thursday. Anything you can do to help alleviate the suffering for the farmers and the gardeners and those that are raising foodstuffs, Lord, every one of us in this chamber would be deeply grateful for any rain that you would send. We're thankful, Lord, today for those who serve this community and for the large community presence here tonight to share in these meetings. When the community comes, no matter the issue, Lord, we're all stronger and better when we work together. I lift up, Lord, those within our city family who I know need your touch. I pray for the mayor. He had a replacement, joint replacement today. I pray for his therapy and recovery. And I pray for Mrs. Reclu and any others in our city family who need your touch. I'm grateful, Lord, for all who lead our city and for Deputy Mayor tonight as she leads the session. And I thank you, Lord, that any discussions that are held and any decisions forthcoming, that they first be pleasing to you. I want to be faithful to remember two firefighters who gave their lives in the line of duty in New Jersey last weekend. And, Lord, also, two police officers, one in Alabama and one in Phoenix, Arizona, who fell to the hardships and difficulties serving in the line of duty. We pray, Lord, that you'll bless this session tonight and may everything said and done be done to honor you. We pray in your name. Amen. Attention, salute and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor.
Okay.
Okay, can everybody hear me? Can you hear me twice? There we go, that's better. All right, so we're going to move next on to our recognition of retired fire captain Irving Garvison. Hello, Erv, you want to come on up? And Chief Kofeld, are you coming up as well? All right, so the city has prepared a proclamation for you, and I'm going to read that on behalf of Mayor Myers. Whereas on the occasion of the retirement of Fire Captain Irving Garvison from the employment of the City of Fulton Fire Department after eighteen years and eleven days, it is proper that the city record an expression of its grateful appreciation of his faithful and exemplary service as a firefighter in the City of Fulton. And whereas Irving has conscientiously served the City of Fulton, Missouri commencing on June 6th, 2005, as a firefighter with subsequent promotions to fire engineer and his final promotion to fire captain on November 1st, 2012. And whereas the performance of his duties and responsibilities and his working relationships were characterized by his professionalism and expertise. And whereas Irving's dedication to his trade is undeniable and is substantiated with many certifications in his field. Now therefore, I, Steve F. Myers, Mayor of the City of Fulton, on behalf of the city council and the citizens of our community, extend our sincere and grateful appreciation to Irving Garvison for these many years of loyal service to this community. We wish to convey our heartfelt congratulations and best wishes to Irving for much successes and happiness in the upcoming years.
Erv, I also have a certificate of appreciation from Tim Beans, Missouri State Fire Marshal's Office. They sent it after your retirement on the sixteenth, so they asked if I would present it for them. It says, appreciation of over eighteen years of service to your community and the citizens of the great state of Missouri, we owe you a debt of gratitude. The loyalty and commitment you have demonstrated throughout your career exemplifies the best of the Missouri fire service. Your dedication is appreciated and respected by all. And the City of Fulton, we've got you a plaque. It says, with great honor and recognition for your devoted service to the Fulton Fire Department and the citizens of Fulton, you wore the badge well, sir.
What an awesome thing, Erv. Thank you so much for your service to our city. Okay, next on our agenda, we have comments from visitors. This is for anyone who is here to speak or has something to say that is not related to the public hearing that we're going to be holding here around seven o'clock. So is there anyone present who has comment for the council? Okay, seeing none come forward, we will go ahead and move on. The next thing on the agenda is the public hearing, but that is to take place at 7:00 PM. So we're going to skip over that until it's closer to seven or a little after. So we're just going to move right on down the agenda. So next, we have the approval of the consent agenda. This is an opportunity for council members to remove an item for discussion prior to approval. On tonight's agenda, we have appointment of Greg Newsom to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a four-year term.
Move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? That motion passes. Thank you. All right, I don't believe we have any unfinished business this evening, so we're going to move right on into new business. Tonight, we have Stacy Ferguson. Is she present? Come on up. Stacy is here from her residence on Cathy Street to request approval to close an end of Cathy Street for a family event. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead.
Okay. Okay. My son's turning four and I don't want the whole street blocked off, just the part by my house, which has like a connecting alley that goes up to the next apartment just so I can have his birthday. Unfortunately, I live on a cul-de-sac where people think it's NASCAR. So people ripping up and down our street. I just want at least one part of the street blocked off. And I've talked to some of the neighbors, so they already knew so. Only people I worry about is my next door neighbor in the apartment across me because that's the only part that I want basically blocked off.
And just so everyone is aware, this is the twelve hundred block of Cathy Street, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And you've spoken with our local police department? And there are no issues?
Just now.
Just now? Do you have any issues or concerns with this, sir? Okay.
I would like to make a motion to approve what she's requesting.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, I have one. Just a little bit. You said you talked with the, your residents in the area. You have, they all approved and no problems?
Yes, they all did.
Okay, thank you.
I just care about my next door. All the rest of the kids will be there.
Sounds like fun. Any other discussion?
As far as the actual closure of the street, is that something that we help with via signage or was that? How does that really work, I guess, to make sure that people driving through understand that the street is indeed closed and obviously.
I just want that alley by my house. Because the bounce house is actually going to be in my front lawn. It's the one we bought from Walmart, Tartwell Sam's Club, actually.
Bill Advoc Police Chief, we should be able to get her some cones or a couple of barricades from the street department for that. It's not going to be a very big area in the cul-de-sac, but just enough to keep the kids safe from the traffic away from where they're at. We've also offered to maybe have a fire truck or police car come by at some point too to let the kids come in and, you know, get in and turn on the lights. Make it a fun birthday.
Awesome, thank you.
The only time for once.
Okay, any further discussion for this item? I'll call for the question. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And opposed? That one passes as well.
Thank you.
You're so welcome. Happy birthday. All right, keeping an eye on the time. We're going to go ahead and move forward. Next on the agenda, we have Tara O'Shea. Tara is our Assistant Parks and Rec Director, and she's here to request approval for the summer concert series at Veterans Park. And I'm not sure if all the council has had an opportunity to meet Tara, but this is Tara.
How are you this evening? So we are looking at doing a concert series in the park. There would be no food trucks and there would be no street closures. It's going to be at Veterans Park in the amphitheater. The first one would be Thursday, July 20th at 7:00 PM with the Mexico Community City Band. And then Cucannon Band would be Friday, August 4th at 7:00, and they are a young pop band that is recording their first CD or record or whatever you want to call it these days. And then Travis Quetz and the Stardust Cowboys would be Saturday, September 9th at 7:00 PM, and it's all free admission to the public.
What about security? You having, you know, need security or anything like?
Um, at this point, it doesn't seem like we would. Chief Ladwig is aware that we are having them, so there was, I don't think there was any concern on your end, right?
Move to approve the request as presented.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Tara. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on to council concerns. This is an opportunity for council members to discuss matters that are not on the agenda. And we will also get updates on their boards and commissions and any updates on the most recent meetings that they've held. So let's go ahead and get started. Councilman Henchy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have no concerns.
Thank you. Okay. Just for myself, I would normally be the next one, and I don't want to take Mayor Myers' place on the agenda, but I did want to let everyone know that I have spoken with him. He is in recovery. He's doing well, and he hopes to be back with us as soon as he can. So I know I personally am very excited for him to get back as soon as he can. All right, Councilwoman Reclu, I can see you. It's your turn for council concerns. Is there anything you'd like to discuss? Hold on one second, Mary. We can't hear you. Nothing, nothing yet. Did you mute us? Are you telling us that you have no concerns?
Hello, can you hear me now?
I am not a good lip reader, Mary. Why don't you work on that and we'll come back around to you, okay? See what you can do. Button on the bottom left, I'm hearing.
Can't see you give up. Okay.
Michael, is that on our end? Okay, we're going to let them try to figure that out, and we'll go ahead and move on. Councilman Stone.
Yes, one, the Historic Preservation Commission is meeting next week. That meeting will be Wednesday, July the 19th at 1:00 PM in the executive chambers. And everyone is welcome to attend any of the commission meetings, and so anyone from the public's welcome to meet there. And I believe we still have one vacant board seat if there's anybody in the public that's interested in serving on the Historic Preservation Commission. I just, my two usual concerns to pass on, just a thank you to the progress that is being made on the sidewalk project on Business 54 South. That's been a high visibility project for me over the last couple of years. And I'm glad to see that progressing. And then just if we can get an update on the wall at Second Street and Ravine is Kyle here this evening. There's Kyle. If we can get an update on that progress and just if it's going to be a longer time before we have resolution, if we can do something about just maybe the top part of that wall to have it removed or something.
We are still waiting on the property rights from the, from the property owner. I believe that we will get that in the next month and this fall. I'm hoping that we can actually see some progress on that wall, so. But it'll be at least till the, till the fall till that happens.
Any opportunity to take off the the top of that wall that belongs to us, or is that part of the?
We would have to, that, that, that part we would have to contract out, and to do that, we really need to, the the earth behind that wall would have to be excavated and, and at least pushed back, you know, to allow for that. So it, it would be, I would prefer to do it all at one time, but.
Continue to receive complaints from all citizens for that area, so.
Yep, we, we definitely want to get that done.
All right, appreciate it. That's all I have.
And Kyle, while you're there, have there been any accidents or anything, any close calls or anything since that portion was built up there?
As far as accidents and close calls, I would assume that there would have been, you know, that I would have to confer with, with the police chief to see what our accident record is. We do, we do map those accidents and I could pull that information and take a look and send it to you or.
No, I was just knowing that. I've been down that road and I've been looking at that concern that Councilman Stone has mentioned and constituents. I I haven't really had any problem. And I approached there and I just make sure I'm at the corner and I can see both ways pretty good. So I'm just, I know there's a concern a lot of the citizens, but I just, we're just curious if there was any accidents since that wall's been up there for several months already. And we haven't had any concerns as far as accidents that I know of.
Right. What I can tell you is, is that as far as site distance goes, it, it does not meet, you know, the standard site distance that we would like. So you know, in that regard, I would encourage folks until we get something done to stop and, and then gently come forward till you can, till you can see, you know, and stop at the stop sign, at the stop bar there, and then kind of gently press forward without just going without seeing.
Usually it's the traffic to the right, not so much to the left because the visibility is very good on that. So it's usually you have, you have a little space if you thought, hey, I can go. If you make your approach and as you see the left, you, you you're told to look left first, then look right because that's the first lane of traffic that you're going to enter. So if I'm going to proceed and go through the intersection like I want to go, I usually look left, there's nothing coming. As I inch forward, knowing that wall is there, I wouldn't notice any cars coming in that direction before I actually see it on, so. But I can, I can receive what you just said then. It doesn't meet the sight. Thank you.
Kyle?
Thank you, Councilman Stone. Moving on, Councilman Luther.
Yes, thank you. There's been no airport advisory board meeting since our last council meeting. There's no significant council concerns. I would like to echo Councilman Stone's thankfulness on the progress we're seeing on Business 54. Also, with that being said, the temperature's unfortunately rising again outside, so just put that thought out there, make sure we're watching out for each other. Make sure we all get plenty of water breaks and keeping everyone safe is the number one priority. That's all I got. Oh, and actually, thank you. We have a lot of people in here tonight. It's awesome to see the engagement, enthusiasm from our city and our citizens. I know there are some topics on the agenda that may have brought you in here, but again, coming in like this, every council meeting would be awesome. So please, you're welcome to come in every two weeks and support us, and please give us your input and feedbacks. That's how we get better as a city. So thank you.
Yeah, I agree with that 100%. I love looking out and seeing everyone here, and that is very encouraging for those of us that are sitting up here. So thank you. Councilman Combs.
Yeah, there has not been a planning and zoning meeting since our last meeting. We discussed the same one we're going to discuss tonight, the previous one. As far as concerns, I don't have any concerns. I'll just again echo the appreciation for the emails and stuff coming in. I like getting those and being able to engage with people, hear from people on their concerns around the city regardless of what they are.
All right, thank you. Councilman Washington?
I just recently joined the park board. I have not attended a meeting yet. I hope to soon. There's no other consent. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Nelson?
There has not been a utility board meeting since our last session. I do have one concern. And Kyle, I'd like to forward this email to you from constituent. It's regarding the corner of Eighth and Jefferson. There's, he sent me pictures and it appears as though that there's a pole that maybe sits just off of the sidewalk there, and it has been hit repeatedly. So I'd like to, he attached some of the photos and I would like to go ahead and forward that to you and Courtney to you as well. And that's all.
Okay, thank you. I think we're going to swing around and try to get with Councilwoman Reclu one more time. Can you hear us, Mary?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me? No, okay, sorry.
Hang on, just a second.
Okay. Hello? Sorry.
We love seeing you. We just wish we could hear you too.
I do too.
All right, well, looks like we're having some technical difficulties, so we're going to move right along. Okay?
Yes.
Sorry about that, Mary. All right, looks like we've got about five or six minutes until we can circle back around. Do we want to go ahead and move on to resolutions?
Absolutely.
All right, so up tonight, we have, it looks like just one resolution. Councilman Stone, if you wouldn't mind presenting that for us, please?
Yes. Resolution 3502 Homeland Security Soft Targets Crowded Places Protection Grant. A resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri to sign all necessary documents for the fiscal year 2023 State Homeland Security Program Protection of Soft Targets/Crowded Places Grant. I make a motion to pass Resolution 3502 at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second for Resolution 3502. Chief Ladwig, is there anything you'd like to add to this? I believe we've gotten this in years past, correct?
We've received grants such as this in years past. We have used these grants for body camera purchases. This one, though, this year, we need to catch up on our mobile data terminals that are in the cars. There are the Panasonic Toughbook laptops that allow officers to look at the calls countywide, do their reports and things. They can even take them out, bring them in to the station and use them as a, as a desktop computer even. This grant would cover three laptops, the docking stations, the mounting hardware, everything that we need to upgrade the last three patrol cars that we need MDTs for, so.
That's wonderful. Thank you. Do we have any discussion from the council? All right, we have a motion and a second. Councilman Stone, did you have something? Okay, motion and a second has been made. I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And those opposed, say no. And that has passed. Thank you very much. Okay.
And Deputy Mayor, since we haven't had that public hearing just yet, could we go ahead and move to that third reading? We want to make sure everyone's voice is heard before we go to that one.
Absolutely, you bet. So under ordinances, we're going to move to the third reading, which is the second one listed on your agenda, if you're looking at that. This is bill number 1683. Councilwoman Nelson, would you present that for us, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Bill number 1683, rezoning Tennyson Road, 4.92 acre tract, A-1 to C-2, in ordinance reclassifying under the zoning code an unimproved 4.92 acre tract of land located on the north side of Tennyson Road, just south of Willow Creek subdivision, Willow Creek South in Fulton, Missouri, and establishing an effective date. Make a motion to pass bill number 1683 at tonight's council meeting.
So can.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second for the passing of bill number 1683. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I've got one thing I wanted to add. I think it'll actually pertain to the other piece as well. I've done a lot of research this week and last week trying to wrap my mind around the other zoning ordinance. And then coming and reading a lot about planning and zoning in general. According to state law, section 89.040, you can't actually make any zoning changes without having a comprehensive plan to go off of. Our last one, or the initial one that we have was 1983. The next one is 1993 with minor updates. But this area is not included in there at all. It does talk about Tennyson, but it's not in the map. It's not in any of those things. And so one of the pieces I found in there is that any ordinances, any changes you make aren't legally sound unless you're basing them off that comprehensive plan. And so that would be my concern before we continue to make changes, that it's 30 years old, it's not been updated. We're not continuing to plan, look at new streets, plan through the new streets. If you look at our current map, there is a lot of areas that I think we could call spot zoning, where there's just random commercial areas in the middle of residential areas as compared to the 1983 plan, which was a little bit more straightforward. And so I think for me, before moving forward, I'd like to see us work on correcting some of that and make sure that before we continue to advance that side of town that we correct that with, with coming up with some sort of plan and knowing where we want to go as a city before just doing something. I know we just passed some other ordinances out there, but that was just, just finding those pieces like someone could technically come in and say, hey, you can't legally do this, or want to fight this on it.
Good move, good.
Say, Buck, with that, I I don't want to not move forward with this until we get a little bit more information on that. I mean, we have many zoning changes. If, if, if all of those are now null and void, or if there, if there's a question or concern. So I'd like to make a motion to table bill number 1683 to our next scheduled council meeting until we can get some further guidance.
I'd like to second it.
Councilmembers, if I may clarify, the words postpone?
Postpone, thank you. Getting the habit of using the other word, so yes, postpone.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, for that clarification. Okay, so let's back up here and take a look at what we've got. So we initially had our motion and second. Now we have a new motion to postpone bill number 1683 until we can gather more information on how to move forward, and that motion has been seconded. Is there any discussion on that?
Ellen, can you repeat? Or can you send us that information that you found and reference the law and regulation?
Yeah, that's, yeah, I got it from MML specifically on that piece, but then. Yeah, that's, yeah, I got it from MML specifically on that piece, but then yeah, there's other laws that pertain to it too.
All right.
Okay, so if there's no further discussion, we have our motion and second. I'll call for the question. All those in favor of postponing this until we have more information, please say yes.
Yes.
And those opposed, no? Okay, so the motion has passed to postpone. Thank you. Okay, so we are right at 7:01. So if you're following along in your agenda, we're going to back up and go ahead and move to our public hearing. There's one public hearing on the agenda for this evening and the purpose of that hearing is to consider the rezoning of attractive land noted as 1801 Business 54 South containing 18 acres running west from Business 54 South to Rice Road in Fulton from its current zoning of Residential 1 or R1 to Residential 3R3. The format of the hearing will be as follows. I will issue three calls for anyone wishing to speak in opposition and then three calls for anyone wishing to speak in favor. We ask that you come to the podium, state your name and your address. And I want to remind you that during this time, council cannot interact with you. So we will thank you for your comment, but we will be unable to answer any questions. We are going to limit this to five minutes per comment. And with that, we are ready to go. So this hearing is now declared open.
Deputy Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
You're giving three calls, but everybody has a chance to speak?
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, don't, don't feel as though you have to do one, two, three. You can come at any time and everyone will be afforded the same amount of time. Okay, hearing is now open. I will issue three calls for anyone wishing to speak in opposition on the matter. First call, is there anyone willing to speak in opposition of this matter? You can come up.
Good evening. I'm JW Van. My wife and I are residents on Park Ridge, which, which is adjacent to this property. We own the, I guess, 11 acres that is directly north of this section. So we're concerned as residents and property owners about what's done to that property. And then secondly, we're business owners in the community. We realize the need for affordable housing and housing changes and zoning changes. You know, several concerns I have is if you simply look at access around those properties, I know that there was a concern a year or two ago about the commercial property up on the corner and access and and how crowded it is getting across that highway and, and you know, on foot especially. Rice Road to the west is barely wide enough for two vehicles to pass on as it exists. There's definitely going to have to be some changes on Rice Road. I don't, I know the city owns part of that responsibility and when you transfer over to the state highway portion, you can automatically see that it's wider and easier to drive on. But any kind of development on our area has been a challenge with Rice Road's, you know, narrow stature. Secondly, access to the business loop even from Park Ridge is crowded enough as it is. So I know the addition of even single-family homes will add some traffic, but if we are talking R3, I don't understand the coding, you know, the zoning completely, but to me, R3 means a lot. And there could be anything from duplexes to triplexes to nice apartment buildings. I, I don't know, and I don't know what kind of control you have of that, but so far I've not seen anything that laid out specifically what was going to be done with that property, other than it's going to be zoned for multi houses or multi-living subdivision. So I really think some serious thought needs to be given to what are we opening ourselves up for more long-term in the planning and especially if that planning hasn't already been done? It's easy to change the zoning, but the ramifications of that long-term obviously can be an issue. I know some comments were made at previous meeting about sticking in R3 between R1s. I don't know how you make those decisions. I don't envy you in those decisions. I know in the city limits, there's, there's areas where things are commercial in the middle of other things. It probably should never have been zoned that way. The conversation about affordable housing, I mean, I have an employee who's trying to find a house and, you know, in today's market, how do you define affordable housing? Nothing is affordable, you know, housing is outrageous these days. And, and it's just interest rates as well. So I mean, I, I think that definition is kind of vague as well. What is affordable? And last, you know, from my perspective is I hope as a council member, and again, I don't envy your job, but I, I hope as a council member that you make a decision based on, would you want this in your backyard? Would you make this decision based on if this was your property next to it? This was your street, your family, your friends. And I hope you please keep that in mind, no matter, no matter what the decision is. And most importantly, I would say if you do approve it as R3, I sure would like to know what's going to be there or what's, it's going to be sold or turned over multiple times to something that you didn't actually expect. Thank you.
Mr. Van, before you leave, I may have missed it. Did you state your address for the record?
1306 Park Ridge Drive and then the 11 acres behind that we own that is Rice Road on the west side and then the property of Conversation on the south.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
All right, we're going to move on to second call. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of this matter?
And I will just reiterate again, if there are multiple people that would like to speak during each call, you're welcome to kind of plan to move forward. Again, the Deputy Mayor will do three calls, but you're not limited to three individuals to speak.
You can come on up. Just remember to give us your name and address, please.
Michelle Nichols, 1303 Park Ridge, as well as owning an additional piece of property off of Rice Road. To play off of, Mr. Van, is that yes, do you want this in your backyard? Let's talk about access. The amount of traffic that is already on Park Ridge is out of control. It's fast. I have animals meeting horses. I pull a horse trailer. It is very narrow to get up Rice Road with a trailer, truck and trailer. But then when he also spoke about affordable housing. As a real estate agent, I also know what prices of houses are right now. Affordable housing brings a lot of things. Government-assisted, low income, or frequent turnover. People that are not invested in the community do not provide income for the community. So we also increase crime, drug trafficking, none of which needs to be anymore in the city of Fulton. But when you're having frequent turnover of citizens that are not invested, that is what you're going to have is increased crime. We bought on that side of Fulton because it's quiet. It's a nice community. And we like how we can access it and how it looks when you come into Fulton. People that are invested in the community take care of their property. People that are not invested do not. And although something might be pretty when it's first built, does not mean it's pretty when it's been a few years old. We need people that contribute to the community, not people that take from the community.
All right, thank you, Ms. Nichols, for coming up. Okay. I'm going to go ahead and move on to the third call. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in opposition of this matter?
Good evening. My name is Kayla Smith and I speak on behalf of my home at 1102 Park Ridge. My husband's not able to be here this evening, but together we have done quite a bit of research over the past couple of weeks since hearing that this was coming before the committee and we wanted to express some of our concerns and opposition for the rezoning considerations. So the, the first issue that we've kind of seen in going through the paperwork is the application for rezoning in itself. I, I know that there was an initial application submitted that was not on behalf of the landowner and so there was a subsequent one submitted. It specifically highlighted that there, the intent to rezone to an R3 was to construct duplexes. So that would be a two-family residence. However, in conversations at the June 27th Planning and Zoning Committee meeting, it was noted that the builder has indicated the intent to build triplexes, which are three-family dwellings. And so in and of itself, the rezoning application would be incorrect for the intents that have been stated by the builder. So that, that's kind of a discrepancy that causes a little pause. What, what else do we not know? What other information is a little bit contradictory in this whole project? So I'd really like to encourage the council to dig into that a little bit further. Additionally, the rezoning to and R3, as stated on the application for constructing duplexes is unnecessary and R2 zoning would be sufficient for that rezoning for that plot of land if the intent was indeed to build duplexes. Also, I have a seven-month-old daughter who I am anxious to see starting to scoot and crawl and then eventually walk and hopefully tear up the city streets of Park Ridge Drive at some point on her bicycle. Everyone knows Park Ridge and Herring do not have sidewalks, but that's okay because we're all aware that we love to share these streets. We love to enjoy safe exercise and walk in these streets and I think cars and people going through the neighborhood are pretty respectful of that. Oftentimes, like it was mentioned by a previous speaker, there's some excessive speeds, which we could probably address as a neighborhood, but for the most part, there is pretty safe walking paths on the streets of Herring subdivision. I do fear that Park Ridge will be a conduit for access to the rear side of the intended plans that we've seen to get to Rice Road and enter as to bypass additional traffic that also will be intended. I, I know that during the Planning and Zoning Committee meeting on June 7th, it was noted that MoDOT would have to complete a survey to understand the current traffic situation, traffic study. And so as of right now, I, I struggle to understand how we could be ready to make a decision for that type of rezoning and that type of multifamily dwelling construction at a place in our city that has not had this traffic volume considered currently and what the potential effects of that would be on the volume of vehicles going through the area on South Business 54. I've also noted in an email sent to the council members and some additional city officials this morning that there have been 82 crashes that were kind of summed up from the Fulton Police Department. Again, thank them for their cooperation and information on that. But we were able to identify 82 vehicle crashes from Silver Drive through Commons Drive, which is a pretty good chunk of that area of town that would be affected by increased residential traffic and volume. There's many businesses and other residents that also live and come in and out of South Business 54 and I think that that needs to be a really strong consideration of the committee when, when choosing whether to rezone this. Additionally, I, I know historically there's been some concerns about Fulton's wastewater handling and treatment that there have been comments that we are not up to code according to the Department of National Resources about the total maximum daily load that's exceeding acceptable numbers of what is being put into the Stinson Creek. I know that the Stinson Creek runs through our city. We've all smelled it, I'm sure. It, it's not pleasant and I would urge the council to consider the impact of these multifamily dwellings on the wastewater treatment and handling before moving forward. Additionally, it, it's been mentioned that some of the concerns for less permanent housing does come with some concern of increased crime. It's been mentioned that this subdivision is comparable to the Willow Creek subdivision, which is located off Commons Drive behind the Fulton Senior Building Alley. And so we also looked to the Fulton Police Department for some information on calls that were located in that area. These calls-
Sorry to interrupt. That's five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Okay, so we've had our three calls for those wishing to speak in opposition of the matter. We'll go ahead and move on to three calls for anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the matter. First call, is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of this matter? And reminder for your name and address, please.
Tamara Titian, Executive Director of the Callaway Chamber of Commerce here in Fulton, 510 Market Street. And I am here today to talk on behalf of the Callaway Chamber of Commerce, just to give you all some reminders as a council. And this tract of property came up for consideration for rezoning back in 2016 and the property was not rezoned and the deal actually fell through having the apartment complexes. I do understand the concerns from the citizens that live in that area and I do hope that you all have kind of taken notes and I could see you all were writing and so was I, because I think there's a lot of obstacles that we need to overcome in order to make sure that we have a win-win situation for our community. And right now, there is a housing needs assessment that is being performed by our CMCA here in Fulton. And that report is not complete, but I did speak with the executive director today and he informed me it is not complete, but it is a sure sign already with the work that they have done there, that there is a need for housing. I also have all of the survey reports that they have done this far. And one of the things that kind of struck me is 45% of those that were surveyed during this said we needed more affordable housing. And I do hear, you know, crime and things like that, but also in the, in the reports, when you talk about affordable housing, who are those folks that need the affordable housing? They're the people that work in our food service, retail workers, healthcare, manufacturing, construction. So that is not low income. That is hard-working individuals that are working for a living. So we do have a housing needs assessment that is taking place. We hope to get that to you just as soon as it's complete. There is a housing task force. Jeff has been a part of that for quite some time in bringing points of view from the council to that task force. And so you all are very well represented, but just please keep in mind, we do have a housing need if we're going to bring in more workforce into our community.
Thank you, Tamara.
My name is Joe Barnhart and my address is actually Vienna, Missouri. So I'm not too far away from here, but a little ways. I'm from a town that is about 700 people, so I definitely understand the, what's, what's needed and what these small towns have. And I actually should probably start off with I'm the, the owner of Dwell 3D, which is the company that's looking to develop this property. So I realized that one of the biggest issues that we face as a community is our lack of ability to house individuals, whereas kids that would like to come back and live, they just can't because there's nothing there for them. I certainly want to dispel any myths about low-income housing. That is in no way our objective. We have basically, we're getting $0 from the government, any sort of subsidies. So this is not that, but what we do want is reachable. So it's a very big difference between the two. And most of what you spoke about is very, is very true. I mean, that's, that is something that whenever I hear, you know, low-income housing, it's just nothing but bad connotations, but we want something to where the individuals who do work and support our communities have a place where they can call home in that community and that's what we really want to create. So as far as duplexes, triplexes, single-family, we're extremely open to that. We are not dead set on it has to absolutely be this, otherwise we're not interested. We're very, very open to collaborating with Fulton in any capacity they see fit. So for example, it might be a bit of a mix. It may be single-family. It may be duplexes and we want to have the ability to do triplexes because that makes it to where it's reachable for more. So we very much want to work together with the community and with, with the, the city to find a solution that is going to work. So that's what I have to say and I'm certainly welcome any questions. I very much want to be open with, with our desires to move forward and be an asset to the community.
Thank you, Mr. Barnhart. Just a reminder, we, we can't interact with you at this time, but I'm sure if anyone has any, any additional questions, they will get your contact information.
Good evening. Janay Danuser, Danuser Machine Company, 500 East Third Street. And Joe, I too am very much looking forward to the time that you can answer some questions. As I spoke before planning and zoning, I was just representing Danuser Machine Company as an employer. I'm also a chamber board member where we're obviously representing many, many employers in the county and also on the FADF. where we're obviously representing many, many employers in the county and also on the F A D F. I have many friends in this room and I can appreciate, I thought Kayla Smith, those were some very wise, logical points that you had there. I think there are a lot of concerns that simply need to be addressed. What I learned out of the last meeting is there are just a lot of questions. I'm just voicing my support, for I don't think it's a ubiquitous term, affordable housing. I think the, the folks that Tamara just mentioned, those are the types of people that we're employing in this county. So we're talking about housing for people who make fifteen to twenty-five dollars an hour. I'm saying that affordable is not a starter home. I don't believe a starter home is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and above. I'm looking for something that's affordable for people that are our employees and those that we represent on the chamber. Uh, whether that's in this area or some other area, I'm just excited that somebody is interested in building in this county because we desperately need it. This county needs it to grow to, for our own businesses that are here, and if we wish to attract anything uh, more in the future. And I certainly hope that the residents' concerns get addressed. Like Tamara said, the, the goal is a win-win, but we've got to have housing. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments.
Uh, hello, my name's Daniel Christensen. Um, my address is in Tebets, Missouri, twelve zero one one State Road B B. Um, I, I've been in this area for twenty-five years, half of my life. My parents are missionaries at Turkey Hill Ranch Bible Camp. I grew up uh, around here. Um, my and I've built around here. I've worked around here. Uh, I eat food around here and uh, I have friends that live here. Um, and I also am an owner of Dwell Three D, the company that's uh, wanting to develop here. Um, we're a new style building. We three D print homes. Um, they're stronger, um, they're faster built, they're better insulated. Um, you can't run them over with a semi truck. Uh, you can't knock holes in the wall of them. Um, and they, they're just a better home. And that's what I'm trying to bring here. That's what I'm trying to move forward in building. I've built stick frame homes for many, many years, and I've watched them burn to the ground and I've watched them fall over. I've watched them rot, and this is changing the whole game. And we want to do it here because I'm from around here. My, my wife's grandfather owned all the land that's um, next to this property um, a long time ago. Uh, that farm's been turned into your guys' neighborhoods, and I would have loved to own that farm and keep it a farm and never let anybody build anything on it. Um, but that's just not feasible in cities where you want growth. And where you want to bring people like me and like you here um, to raise their kids. I have three kids. I have a seventeen year old. I have a twelve year old. I have a four year old. I spread it out. Um, uh, it's rough. I haven't slept in seventeen years. So w- w- we are just like you, and we want to work with Fulton. We want to work with you guys to create a neighborhood that's for Fulton, not for Columbia or, you know, or any of these big surrounding areas that have their issues. We want to create something that's here, that's going to be here for a long time, that's going to support this area uh, to, for people like me. I'm a renter. I, I live in my father-in-law's house and I rent from him, so I've always rented my whole life. And I give a lot to the community. I, I'm not low income, even though my rent is probably half of what you homeowners pay for your homes. Um, and I volunteer. I, I do all kinds of things, and there's a lot of people like me that need houses and they need to be able to rent also. Um, and my homes will give the ability for landlords to make have less investment in their buildings because you can't even punch holes in my walls. Um, you can't bang hammer holes in my walls, so there's going to be less cost every time we move new people in and move new uh, new people, uh, and move people out of our buildings also, which allows us to invest in our communities, our tenants and our buildings. Um, and we will do that. I want to keep most of these buildings and so do my partners. We don't want to give them away to a lot of people. We want to invest in them. I want my kids to invest in them. He wants his kids to invest in these and, and possibly your kids. And uh, maybe you uh, will want to own these buildings when we see what we can create. We're stepping into this new building style, which there are a lot of questions there, and I've been getting a lot of them over Facebook, and we will answer all of those questions. We've been doing this for a few years now. We've got a lot of engineers and people have been doing this for seven to ten years and uh, we've got a lot of answers and we've got a lot of questions still, but we're moving forward to make something better. That's what America's been about my whole life. We, we got to start making things that are better for us, that last longer, that are worth what we're paying for them. We pay so much for our homes now and they fall down, they collapse and they rot. Uh, we got to change all that, and that's just our goal with Dwell Three D is to bring that style here and, and make things better for us and show the world that we can build things that are going to make it easier for us to maintain and live in and make uh, better buildings that are worth what we're paying for them, and they're going to last in our communities. These buildings are going to be structures that'll be there for a long time, and if I created something in this community that looked bad, my whole family would give me grief the rest of my life. So I have to fight every day to make sure that this project works for you, works for my wife, uh, and works for her dad, uh, because this place means that much to them.
Okay, sir. That's all I can give you. That's five minutes.
Well, thank you very much, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Christensen. Okay, let's go ahead and move on to our second call. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of this matter? Let's go ahead and move to our third call. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of this matter? Seeing no one come forward, I will go ahead and declare this public hearing closed, and we're going to move back to our regular agenda. Okay, that brings us to, excuse me, our ordinances. Tonight, we do have that first read for bill number sixteen eighty-five. Um, I just want to remind our council that we are not voting to approve or not approve. We are just voting to advance this to the second reading. Uh, Councilman Luther, if you would, please present that bill for us.
Yes. Bill number sixteen eighty-five, rezoning eighteen oh one Business Fifty Four South, an ordinance reclassifying under the zoning code, attractive land located at eighteen oh one Business Fifty Four, containing eighteen acres running west from Business Fifty Four South to Rice Road in Fulton, Missouri, and establishing an effective date. I make a motion to place bill number sixteen eighty-five on the postpone based on the comments brought up by Councilman Combs. Um, I know unfortunately it's a lot of citizens here tonight, but I think we do have a legal obligation to follow up with Mr. Combs's uh um, suggestions before we can move forward. But I do make recognition that we try to expedite this because we have citizens and, you know, developers that are anxiously waiting this decision.
Okay, so our motion is to postpone advancing bill number sixteen eighty-five to second reading.
Deputy Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
If I can ask, can I have a date that we'd like to postpone this to? To council meetings from now until we bring it up again?
Not sure. Courtney, you have a, an idea how fast we can look into the departments?
Well, our, our city councillor is here tonight and we're already making eye contact, so I, I believe we can have a conversation about that and try to find some answers. Uh, at this point, I think it would be appropriate to go ahead and put it on the next agenda, and if for some reason we find that that won't be sufficient time, we will certainly let the city council know and make sure that the public's aware of that as well. Um, and at that time, if there is a need for additional time, we can postpone again, but our hope is to hopefully be able to get some answers.
Is everyone in favor of amending that to postponing to our next council meeting? That motion?
Yes, I would like to amend my motion to postpone bill number sixteen eighty-five until the next scheduled council meeting.
Second. Councilwoman Nelson, you offered the second. Are you okay with the amendment as well on your second?
Thank you, both.
Thank you. Okay, so we do have our motion and our second to postpone. Is there any further discussion from the council on this?
When is the next Planning and Zoning Board Meeting?
It'll be July twenty-fifth.
That's our next council meeting as well, isn't it?
Yes, we meet at, um, right before that. It'll be in the executive conference room.
In, in case this item needed to go before planning and zoning, I just wanted to get it in my head when their meeting was.
It's actually the same time as the work session that week. We have a work session at five thirty on the twenty-fifth, planning and zoning meetings at the same time.
That's correct. Um, I don't feel like it would go back to planning and zoning. Are you-
New information that Councilman Combs has brought up about
Bad information.
The procedural issue that needs to go back, and that's what I meant. Is that that procedural issue may need to be discussed by planning and zoning before it can be brought back to the council.
Thank you, Councilman Stone, for that clarification. Madam Clerk, are we-
We're ready for you to take the call.
All right. Any further discussion? All right, I'll call for the question.
Actually, if I, just a comment, um, as Ms. Dan user mentioned, I've been serving on the Safe and Affordable Housing Task Force for the last five years now here in the community. And it's, we're looking at the entire spectrum of, of rentals and homeownership and and the unhoused and homeless in the community and all of that. And all of this information is the stuff that, that we're putting together. So all of the comments that have been made tonight, all the comments that have been shared with us through email and telephone and the stuff that we're collecting through the surveys, and we had an open house of a couple of months ago where we did the data walk and had lots of people come out and look at the information. Um, there is, there is a lot of activity going on in many different areas within the community about growth and about the, the homes and the housing that we need here. So please continue to share your, your, your questions, your comments, everything. Uh, challenge it back to Planning and Zoning. Bring it to us. Let's get it back to the chamber. Let's get it to the Safe and Affordable Housing Task Force. Please continue to share this information because this is, this is how all these groups are bringing this information to us.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of this postponement, please say yes.
Yes.
And those opposed, say no. Okay, that motion to postpone has passed. Okay, I think that's everything on our agenda. We're going to just finish up here with some announcements. Our next city council meeting will begin on Tuesday, July twenty-fifth at five thirty. Uh, the live stream will begin at six thirty. I believe we will have our public hearing that evening. Um, again, just want to wish Mayor Myers well and a speedy recovery, and thank you all so much for being patient with me as I muddle through this this evening. Uh, we do have a need for an executive session, so I'll need a motion.
Make a motion. What's the reason for the executive session?
We are going to be looking at A as well as B.
Make a motion to exit to executive session to work with legal actions as well, you said B, as well as personnel issues.
I have a motion and a second to excuse to executive session. Any discussion? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And those opposed, no?
That will actually need to be a roll call vote. Mr. Henchy?